Go ahead, you have record.
Okay, somebody snitched my gavel.
Uh-oh.
There we go. All right. I'm assuming the recording is about...
Yes, there you go.
Thank you. All right, the meeting of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills Planning Board for Monday, July 24, 2023, at 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at Sec. of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Barbario.
Here.
Councilman Di Piero.
Here.
Mr. Math.
Present.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Mr. Stansiel.
Here.
Mr. Von Aiken.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
Our board planner, Ms. Winter. Our board engineer, Mr. Canziano, and our board attorney, Mr. Logano.
If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, start by saying this meeting is open to the general public. Is there anyone here who has an item they wish to discuss with this board at this time that is not on our agenda for tonight? Hearing and seeing none. First, we go to the Resolution 23:513, J&amp;J Farms Creamery. I assume we have the list of people who are eligible.
Yep.
Was somebody willing to move the J&amp;J Farms Creamery?
I will, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Napolitano.
Motion to approve resolution for application number 23:513, J&amp;J Farms Creamery Incorporated, 100 Jefferson Road, Block 737, Lot 5, Zone SED-5A. Minor site plan for docks, rooftop refrigeration units, sign and parking.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Nora, would you call the roll?
Barbario.
Yes.
Di Piero.
Yes.
Math.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes. All right, next, the Resolution for 6 Sylvan Way, Block 202, Lot 1.9, area needed redevelopment. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I will motion that the... How do we say it? There's no numbers.
Just move the resolution.
I will move the resolution that we find that 6 Sylvan Way, Block 202, Lot 1.9, is an area in need of redevelopment.
So I have a second?
Second.
Napolitano, okay, very good. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Barbario.
Yes.
Di Piero.
Yes.
Math.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes. All righty then, we move on to our agenda tonight. Application number 23:504, Ashkshar Group LLC, 1081 Precipiny Boulevard, Blocks 412, Lot 14, minor site plan with C variances to install a generator.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is John Graham. I'm attorney with the law firm of Miranda and Ronowitz. I'm here tonight with the applicant, Ashkshar Group LLC. Ashkshar Group LLC has filed a minor site plan application. They're seeking to install a natural gas generator at property located in 1081 Precipiny Boulevard. As you and members of the planning board probably know, that particular piece of property is located in the O3 office zone. In connection with that application, we are here this evening seeking three bulk variances. One is for maximum purview coverage, and then there are two variances for side yard and front yard setback for accessory use. That accessory use here obviously being the natural gas generator. I've brought here with me this evening as a representative and CEO from Ashkshar Group, Mr. Pratap Jaiter. Mr. Pratap Jaiter tonight is going to be providing testimony as to what Ashkshar Group does, where this particular gas generator is going to be located on the property, what is it going to be on, why do they need this particular gas generator, what is going to be its operation, and noise level, tree removal, which will be non-signage, things like that to address any board concerns. We will also obviously address any questions this particular board may have of them as well. Upon the conclusion of his testimony, it was my hope that I would be able to address the board as to the entitlement of the C variances in accordance with the municipal land use law. That's really all I have at this particular point of introduction. If the board has any questions to me or need guidance or something I can offer, we have to...
Okay, but first, we're going to do some waivers.
Sure.
There are some waivers. So we have a couple of waivers. It's a relatively small project, submission of site photographs. Let's see if my computer moves very slowly down the next line. Space for signatures of chairman and secretary and township engineer. We would just ask that those be part of resolution compliance, be added to the plans. Contours on the site, existing and proposed signs, my understanding that there are none or no changes. Existing proposed utility service includes septic systems. And all these are repeats, actually. That would be it.
All right. You agreed to all the waivers just mentioned?
Absolutely.
All right. Do we have a motion approving the waivers, please?
No moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right. Counselor?
Thank you. At this time, I offer Pratap Jaiter is our...
Sir, please raise your right hand. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Please state your name and spell your last for the record, and please speak into the mic.
First name Pratap, last name Jaiter. I spell the last name J-A-Y-A-K-R.
Can you spell your first name? I'm sorry.
P as in Peter, R-A, P as in Tom, A, P as in Peter.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Jaiter, what is your affiliation to the Ashkshar Group?
So we are leasing the space, one of the suites from Ashkshar Group, for past several years now, and then we have additional three-year lease that we have signed with them just in June of 2023. And our line of business is into IT consulting and solutions. So we work with Fortune 1000 companies here in the US, and we run certain IT infrastructure that supports these clients out of our computer center here at the same location. So from the business continuity perspective, it is imperative that we have the information for our clients always available, 24/7. And in the past few years, what we have witnessed is power outages. And whenever there's a power outage, it can take anywhere between half hour to maybe a few days, and that is something that is going to be unacceptable, detrimental to the existence of our business. And to ensure that we have provision for business continuity, we even upgraded our internet system. So we went from a traditional optimum online, which was $150 a month, to optimum light path, because that's the only option which is available at that location, which is about $1,000 a month for internet service. So that gives assured 99.99% of time. But when it comes to the power, we have no such commitment that we can give to our customers, and that's the reason we decided to go for a gas generator, which is, it's got a noise level of only about 72 decibels, and a typical dishwasher is about 72 decibels in noise. So a coffee grinder makes a lot more noise than this particular equipment, and it comes from Cummins, and the series is called White Connect. So again, this is only and only when there is a power outage. So the system does not run 24/7. Only when we have a power outage, we need to ensure that this power comes from the generator, and when it has got the auto transfer switch, so once the power is restored, the generator switches off. So this is only for business continuity purposes.
Mr. Jaiter, you just testified. This generator will give you the option, the ability to provide information to your clients and customers. What information are you referring?
So we execute different type of projects for our clients. Antrak is our customer. You look at Baxter, you look at BP, which is an oil and gas company. So those are the kind of clientele we have, so we do projects for them, and their data, their information will reside on those applications. So if... Now, these are 24/7 companies. They probably have staff working 24/7. If anybody wants to access information anytime, maybe on a specific time zone whatsoever, we have no option to tell them that, oh, the data is not available because the servers are down, there is no power. We have UPS, which is from APZ, which is like the world's number one brand for backup, but that backup can provide us only about an hour worth of electricity. So once that one hour worth of juice in the batteries is done, we are kind of out of action.
And how many clients can you approximate from this board that you service? How many clients?
We have about, close to about 30 Fortune 1000 companies, which are billion-dollar plus in revenue.
And on what particular device or foundation or whatnot would this natural gas generator be placed?
So generally, any, for those who have seen the generators in your homes, I have one in my house as well, they have like a concrete base, which is to ensure that there's a good amount of stability for this particular equipment, and then on top of that base, you will have the generator. And the generator is about 10 feet in length, it's about 3 feet in width and 5 feet in height, so it's not an enormous or a monstrous device. If you will, slightly bigger than the home generator, it's only a 50 KW. The one that I have in my house is about 30 KW.
Other than the installation of this 3x5 foot concrete slab and obviously the insulation of the generator, yet doing any other site work in this particular...
No, there is none. There'll only be one gas connection that will go to the generator, and the connection is very much towards the front, so the connectivity to the gas pipeline is very close.
Any connection with this installation work, you're not removing any trees, exactly?
Oh, no, 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 because it is a very, very small space that this particular generator is going to occupy.
And you're not installing any new signage or anything along those, no lighting or anything?
No, no, no. So just near the generator, we probably will put a sign that says, "Do not touch," or, yeah, so that's the only thing that we'll probably do. That's again for safety purpose. And that particular side of the building, you have the animal shelter on the same sideways. Nobody really goes there. I've been in that office, and my window is right on that side of the road. There's hardly one or two people who go every three days.
And Mr. Jaiter, you recognize that this generator would have to periodically be tested, is that correct?
Yeah, generally, based on the models that you produce, the generator will have to be tested maybe once a month or once a quarter to ensure that everything is good, and the test is for not more than 15 minutes, and it can happen during business hours.
And you would agree that it would only be done during business hours?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Because if anything is required in terms of maintenance, then because it is in business hours, Cummins, who's the leading technology provider for generators, so they will send their folks to get whatever maintenance is required.
And this is in fact a natural gas generator, it's not diesel, so...
It's not diesel, yeah. So that was one of the reasons. Diesel generators are at least 25 to 30% cheaper than gas generators, and they make a lot of noise.
How long have you been at that property, 1081 Precipiny Boulevard?
For at least five years. I think so, yeah, five years.
And if required by this board, would you be willing to do appropriate screening around the generator?
Yes, yes, yes.
And I'm sorry, you testified earlier that the noise of this particular generator, according to your literature, there would be equivalent to a dishwasher.
A dishwasher, yes, yes. So refrigerator is about 50 decibels, kitchenette is about 80 decibels, so this is less than even a kitchenette.
Now, you're placing...
Or any juicers.
You're placing this gas generator on a piece of property in the side yard. Was there anywhere on that property you could install this gas generator, which you would not have needed these side yard and front yard?
No, this was the old Precipiny Post Office building, and the way the building was constructed, it hardly had any provision to put up, you know, a device or an equipment. We would have preferred to do it somewhere inside the parking lot area, but then because those plans were already approved and those parking lot spaces were already approved, there was no way we could go and even explore that. So it is going to cost us actually more money to put it on the side of this particular building. But it's much better in terms of safety, because there's no residential complexes or there's no other major building that is right next to this particular...
Mr. Chairman, I believe that's all the questions I have at this time.
Thank you. Yeah, I noticed that. I'm just... Nora, did we get a list of the people within 200 feet?
Yeah, we...
Okay.
We did, and it was, very interestingly, it was, I believe, four or five commercial properties and then utilities. I mean, there's not residents or anything.
No, I just wanted to make sure that that T was crossed.
We usually have them as part of the site plan, so they're not, they were set separately.
And 12 dogs.
Yep. There's the shelter, there's the senior center, and then some other...
Yeah, the senior center is on the other side, and the shelter is on the side where we want to put the generator, yeah. And then 1055 is fairly far, but that's the commercial building, it's very far from that location.
Okay, are there any questions by members of the board of this witness? Mr. Von Aken?
Beat you too. Okay, could you just let me know where your gas line is going to be installed from?
There is, there is towards the front lawn, where we have seen New Jersey, not New Jersey, actually, Post Energy and New Jersey Natural Gas, they have their markings.
Were they involved in the planning of the location at all?
When we did the initial assessment, we did schedule a meeting with them, because they might have to put a bigger pipe to accommodate this extra connection going to... So, but that is going to be taken care by the contractor and the gas company.
All right, and my other question is just, I think that fence probably would be appropriate. I'll certainly let the other members of the board speak on that if they think so.
Yeah, if it is required from a safety perspective, to even safeguard our interest, it would be a good idea to kind of put boundaries on all sides of the generator, so that it's not visible, and at the same time, someone will have an easy access to that as well.
Yeah, I don't know what the appropriate height of that fence would be based on all the zoning, but somebody will help out with that.
Yes, and the height is, the height for the equipment is only 5 feet, so anything which is more than 5 feet probably should suffice.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Math, you had a...
Sure, a couple. So you've got this situated, at least in the site plan, I have 5 feet from the building, and then only 3 feet from the property line. Is there any reason why, is there any reason why it needs to be 5 feet away from the building?
The...
The generator?
The generator?
Yeah.
I think what we were told is it needs to be 5 feet, otherwise we would not get the approval.
Um, okay.
It's an engineering approval?
Yeah, so that's what, that is what, because you need to have it at some distance from, you cannot touch the building.
Okay.
So that was the initial assessment, so we said, keep it at a good distance, but there wasn't additional space to really take it right to the edge, because then we have the need for the baby.
Okay. And I guess there's no fuel storage because it's gas, correct?
No, it's natural gas.
All right. And you said 72 decibels, right?
Yes.
Okay, so Andrew, or Christine, or somebody, does the Noise Control Act apply to this? Or is it exempt when there's a power outage?
Uh, out of this board's jurisdiction, I don't know that question.
It's just that the Noise Control Act calls for 65 decibels of the property line and 50 decibels at night. And now you're telling us specifically that you're putting something right next to the property line that exceeds those thresholds.
It's 72 decibels, and based on certain homework that we have done on public domain, 72 decibels is very, very acceptable. It is right in the center. Anything more than 120 decibels can really damage your ears, so we are right at the 72, which is midway.
Well, yeah, it just so happens that the Noise Control Act calls for no more than 65 decibels during the daytime at the property line, and 50 decibels at night, no more than that. I'm not sure if, I think that in power outages, the Noise Control Act is disregarded because of the noise of generators, but I'm just curious, that's all.
Well, they agree to, they will be following whatever our law is.
Okay.
If we run into violation of that, I'll...
I believe that one also requires to have somebody actually there to...
To measure it.
To complain. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
There is no residential around also.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it only applies to residential. I don't know. Okay, thanks.
Anybody down this end have any questions?
I just have one. So just for clarity, you don't own the building?
No, I don't.
But you have permission to put this generator there?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Any other members? Our professionals have any questions?
I just generally had a question that I'd asked before, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Stansiel?
Prior to signing a lease, if we didn't approve this here, you said that you signed a three-year lease. What, did you have an out?
Yeah, because we have seen power outages happening, so then it is detrimental for us, it needs to be in Precipiny.
Okay, just because I thought it was a little odd that you had signed a three-year lease without having this done first or approved.
Okay. Mr. Canziano?
No, just to follow up on the fence question, 4-foot fence max in the front yard and 6-foot on the side, so this is 4 feet into the front yard, so it would only, could only have, without a variance, a 4-foot-high fence.
So you said it's 5 feet tall?
Yeah, 5 feet, yes.
So you would need at least a 5-foot-high fence, which means you'd need a variance for a fence in a front yard?
It's not in the front, it's on the side of the building.
It's technically in the front because of how the setback works, so you need the variance for the generator, because it's at 76 feet instead of 80. The same thing applies for the fence. It would have to be 80 feet back to be 6 feet tall.
Okay.
So if you're okay with requesting the variance for a...
5.5 feet.
We want to make sure it screens the...
We're okay with that.
Okay.
So you're amending your application to add a request for a variance for a fence that's how tall, what we...
Exactly.
I'm going to say 6.
I'm going to say 6 feet. I know the actual generator itself is under 6 feet.
All right. Well, 6 feet would prevent any additional variances.
They have a 4-inch pad or whatever.
The variance would be for 6 foot. You can't, you can go below that, but you can't go over. And that's in the front yard? 6-foot high fence in the front yard?
Covering ring. It's 4 feet to move it back. What's the reason that you can't?
Sorry?
I said it'd be 4 feet to move the generator back.
Towards the building or are you from the building?
Away from the street, to comply with the front yard setback. Is there a reason you...
You can't do that.
You can't do it?
No, we can't.
You can't?
Yeah, if you want, we can.
Because that would eliminate two variances then?
Yes, but if the engineer says that it has to be, or the fire marshal...
Right, so is it... Are there windows on that side of the building?
Yes.
Okay, that could be why. It can't be...
They may also be plantings.
Because they have to be, generators have to be a certain distance from windows. I'm not an engineer or building inspector, so...
You're going to go with what our professionals tell you you have to do.
Yep.
That's right. And not that I'm providing testimony, but it was advised to me in the beginning of this application was a fire concern, because I had asked it. Obviously, the more variance I can eliminate, the better.
Okay.
And I thought 4 feet.
Yeah, so it is a fire issue.
Correct.
All right, are there any members of the public who have questions to this witness on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the Precipiny Plague Board, we would like to thank you for your time and attention here tonight. I know it's a small application, but it's certainly, it's an important application for our client. As I indicated in the beginning here, we are seeking various variances, we are seeking a variance for maximum purview coverage, we are seeking, as we discussed, both the front and side yard setback, and we've amended our application this evening to include a variance for the height of the fence that we'll be screening this particular generator if this application is approved. Now, in connection with the variance request, I would submit to this court, or to this court, to this court here this evening, that what we're essentially seeking is what we refer to as a C2 flexible variance under NJSA 40:55D- subsection C, or 70C2. In connection with that particular variance, the applicant has to satisfy what we refer to as the positive criteria. A positive criteria in this regard is that it, with the flexible variances, that it satisfies the purposes of the municipal land use law. I would submit to the board here this evening that under NJSA 40:55D-70, or I'm sorry, -2 subsection A, this particular variance that you're seeking here permits my client to install a natural gas generator. As you've heard here tonight through his credible testimony, that would allow him to serve the Fortune 500 companies, it would also protect very sensitive information during a power outage, and really, quite frankly, would promote the general welfare, which, as we all know, is one of the goals and purposes of municipal land use law. I also think by allowing the applicant here tonight to install this generator, we're promoting commercial development, because as he testified to, not having a generator here would be, would essentially thwart his business and force him to unfortunately then have to go somewhere other than Precipiny, and he's already been here now for five years. So I think that the positive criteria here has been satisfied. There's also the backend, the positive criteria, that the benefits outweigh the detriments in connection with a C2 flexible variance. I think we've heard here tonight that there really aren't any detriments, and there's, it's, the generator itself is the volume of a dishwasher, it doesn't run 24/7, it will only run during a power outage. This particular piece of property is located in an area where there's no residential properties in these, certainly a 200-foot area, but quite frankly, in quite an extensive circumference from the property itself. It's not a main thoroughfare, we would screen it, we're not removing any trees, we're not taking down any signage, and there's, obviously, there's no increase in traffic, and we would agree to do any testing that was necessary in particular, so I don't think there's really any detriment here, and I think the benefits, as I previously indicated, clearly outweigh. Now, in connection with the negative criteria here, I think that this particular, these four variances that we're seeking here, and the relief from the zoning worries can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. I say that for much the same reason in connection with the positive criteria. We're not trampling upon any residential properties here, we're not increasing traffic, it's not, we're not shining lights into the bedroom with those or any traffic increase, but things we're often very sensitive about when we're handing out variances. I think that this is a particular piece of property that a natural gas generator is appropriate for, and I think that Mr. Jaiter here has very credibly testified that he would comply with, and I would also ensure this, with any other township's requirements. For those reasons, members of the Precipiny Plague Board and Mr. Chairman have requested the application granted and the relief from the C2 also be granted by the various variances. Thank you again. Mr. Chairman, I actually have just a few other questions. Are you the only one, Jaiter, in this building?
No, there are two medical offices.
Okay. There's no intention to share?
No.
The generator, so all the power is going to you?
Actually, to be very honest with you, we took that as an opportunity, because there's a dentist in the same office, and I said, what if you're doing a root canal and you lose power?
Yeah.
You know what you're going to be doing to the patient.
Yep.
But...
And then from, obviously, you're running a data center, right? So what was the planning that... So you've signed on for three more years. So what was the planning in sizing the generator to know, like, hey, this is what... How much growth we're going to get out of that generator?
Our current utilization is going to be not more than 15 kV. So we have sized it in such a way that we are taking 5.0, 50 kW, yeah.
That's all. Okay. Any other questions by the board? Any questions by the public? You finished with your testimony at this time?
Yeah.
All right, any members of the public wish to speak in opposition to this application at this time? Hearing and seeing none, in favor of this application at this time? Hearing and seeing none. I'm assuming you have summed effectively. Is there anything else you want to say?
I have nothing.
Then that discloses the evidentiary portion of tonight's hearing. Is there someone willing to make a motion, or would they like to have our attorney sum all the different things we have to do here?
I'm happy to make a motion.
All right.
Since Mr. Neely isn't here. So on application number 23:504, ASCAR Group LLC, 1081 Parsippany Boulevard, Block 412, Lot 14, minor site plan with C variances to install a generator. There were the three variances and the amended... And the amendment made. So I would go ahead and approve the amended application.
All right. I have a second from Mr. Barberio, Mayor Barberio. Before we go to a vote, I'd like to have our attorney sum all the things that we've amended to this.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are some checklist waivers, although perhaps not all of them are applicable anymore. Space for the signatures of the chairman and secretary, that remains. Existing and proposed topographical contours of the site, is that still something that...
That's still a waiver.
Still a waiver? So you're going to have to provide that as a condition?
No, they don't have to provide it. We're going to give them a waiver for it.
So waivers were granted?
Yeah.
I apologize. I heard granting subject as condition of approval.
The only thing we need is the signature block for the chairman, secretary, and the engineer, and a bulk chart with the setbacks and coverages, et cetera.
Okay. The other condition is that testing of the generator will be done for 15 minutes, be done during business hours Monday through Friday. And you've amended your application to include a six-foot-high fence, and that will help with the screening, which was just a new variance altogether. That's it. Checklist waivers, the testing hours, and then the addition of the fencing as a new variance covers all of the additions.
All right, so we've had a motion and a second. I'm assuming those who did that are happy with what our attorney summed up as the conditions. Nora, would you call a roll, please?
Barberio?
Yes.
DePiero?
Yes.
Math?
Yes.
DiColatano?
Yes.
Stanziel?
Yes.
Von Aken?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
All right, and the granting...
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Yep. Enjoy the evening, and... Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda tonight is the 20 to 30 Lanedex Master Plan Consistency Review. I'm going to turn it over to our planner.
All right. I'm just going to get up for a minute to point some stuff out on the map, and then I'll go over the plan.
Is that... Can the plan down that way?
It's up here, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to see that? Do you want to see the master plan review for the 20 to 30 Lanedex? If you could pass it down, please.
This is just to orientate everyone. This is the Lanedex Way redevelopment area. We designated that a couple months back in the council, or recommended to the council that it be designated an area in need of redevelopment.
I don't think that all of our members could see it.
I will.
I mean, it's fine to take it.
Sorry. There's like no good place for everyone to see.
No.
But so that's the redevelopment area. This is Parsippany Road. This is Lanedex Plaza. It's Block 226, Lots 3 and 3.2. It is currently located in the ROL zone. You have the B3 Business Zone down here, an OS zone, and R4 and R3 zone, residential on the western south side. Orient everyone with what the plan is.
Ms. Winter, just a quick question. This is actually Lanedex West, correct?
Lanedex West.
Good, because it just says 20 Lanedex, sorry.
And that R3 is the school, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
All right.
I'll go back to my notes. So we designated this an area in need of redevelopment, and once we've done that, we need to create a plan for that area. So that is what our office has done. It is two lots. The... I'm going to go over the uses first. There are two permitted uses in this zone. In the redevelopment area would be a fulfillment center and a warehouse, or a warehouse. I've got lots of pages of stuff. There are some accessory uses permitted with that. Zero emission fuel charging stations, subject to circulation, parking, loading plan. Offices, which are accessory to that principal use of warehouse or fulfillment center. Retail space or cafeterias that are exclusively to be used for the employees. Indoor and outdoor recreational amenities are permitted as an accessory use. Gatehouse or security guard house would be permitted. Trash enclosures. As far as the bulk requirements for this lot, or for this project, the minimum lot size is 10 acres. What currently exists in the ROL zone is five acres minimum. The minimum lot width is 450 compared to what currently exists is 300. Minimum lot depth is 500 acres, or 500 feet, sorry. We don't have a standard for lot depth currently. For the principal structure, the setback would be 100 feet from Parsippany Road. That's the same as what's existing now. The... For all other property boundaries, it would be 50 feet. What currently exists is the side yards require a minimum of 50 feet, and the rear yard just requires 40 feet, so that we're increasing the setbacks from the school property. Maximum building height's 50 feet. This is just five feet higher than what's currently permitted. Building coverage is 40% compared to 30% currently, and impervious coverage is 75% compared to 70%. So there's a slight increase on the impervious coverage. Does allow for an accessory structure, one per tenant, and a gatehouse, just one for security. The maximum size of the gatehouse would be 300 square feet, and for an accessory structure, 5,000 square feet. Minimum setbacks for these would be 40 feet from all property lines. Currently, it's 25 feet, and the maximum building height's 20 feet. For your accessory structures, it's 15 normally. The sign... The plan also proposes that wall signs be permitted, one per street elevation, and they would be a maximum of 150 square feet, and they would have to be no higher than five feet below the roof line. There's currently no wall signs permitted in the ROL zone. So currently, anyone who wants to put a sign up would have to come for a variance. Permits for one ground-mounted sign, and with a minimum setback of 10 feet. This is a little less than 20 feet. That is currently required. Sign area is the same at 64 square feet. The max height is 10 feet, which is the same. It also permits for directional signs purely at the... One per accessway entrance. They need to be set back 10 feet. They can't be more than four square feet, and they would be limited to eight feet tall. The only standard we currently have in directional signs is they can't be more than four square feet. And we'll get to the interesting thing, parking. Our current standards for a warehouse or fulfillment type center is by employee, which can be cumbersome with... Especially when there isn't a known tenant. So for this plan, it is one space per 2,500 square feet of gross floor area. The future applicant could request to land bank up to 30% of those spaces. So that would give an opportunity to increase the green space on the property if they don't actually need the parking. If they find they need the parking later, it could be developed. There's a maximum for the number of trailer spaces, which would be two per loading bay. And for loading spaces, there'd be a minimum of one per 20,000 square feet of floor area. Stall dimensions are the same as in the rest of town, nine by... Minimum of nine by 18, and the loading space dimensions are 12... Minimum of 12 by 60. This is slightly different from our current standards, which require the 12 feet, but we base the spot on the length of the truck currently. Parking lot setback is 10 feet from a residential zone and five feet from a non-residential zone. Right now, it is just 10 feet from any property line. So that gives you an idea of what's planned for here. There are a number of design guidelines within the plan, basically encouraging not a flat, undescriptible thing. I see some changes in material color and/or punch-ins and punch-outs. And the most important part is that this is a master plan consistency review. So as part of the redevelopment law, all provisions of a redevelopment plan shall be either substantially consistent with the municipal master plan or designed to effectuate the master plan. The township's most recent master plan was adopted in 2020, and the future land use map shows this area as a corporate office slash manufacturing land use category. Plan notes that there... These areas are a major employment center for the region, but have experienced significant vacancies in recent years. While the plan recommends that these properties retain primary uses of office and/or manufacturing, it does recommend a broadening of land uses to include indoor recreation, entertainment, hotels, fitness, daycare, assisted living facilities, and multifamily mixed use. Master plan further supports an economic policy to encourage redevelopment and infill development in existing commercial and office areas that are vacant or in need of reinvestment, and recommends that township support development that responds to market demand for modern uses. This redevelopment plan provides a framework to redevelop an otherwise vacant commercial office building to meet current market demands for warehousing. Accordingly, this plan effectuates the redevelopment recommendations under the township's master plan. And that concludes my presentation, if anyone has questions.
Yeah, I do. Just to start, so there's no change to the things that are currently allowed? We're just adding things?
No, we're removing the former uses, and it would just be these two uses that are permitted.
Just those two?
Yes. So what is currently permitted is office, executive, and administrative, which part of the reason that area in need has been declared within the town has been the lack of, you know, the increasing vacancies in these office buildings. Scientific research laboratories, limited pharmaceutical production plans, professional and business offices, medical and dental offices, and banks were... Are allowed in the ROL zone.
Okay. Didn't you say manufacturing is allowed in it too? Did I mishear that?
The master plan puts this area as office manufacturing. The... It does not specifically permit manufacturing in this zone unless it's related to pharmaceutical. No.
Okay. So the use is going to be warehouse, and what was the other one?
Fulfillment centers?
Okay.
Which is effectively a transfer station.
I'm familiar.
All right. I would imagine. In terms... We have a limited amount of space here, and if it was to become a warehouse or a fulfillment station, what I thought I heard, because you were going fairly quickly, was a rule limiting the number of...
Loading spaces.
Loading spaces.
Yes.
And I'm just wondering what kind of... If some sort of warehouse were built there, what's the... Was it one per 20,000 square feet, or...
So the loading spaces being, you know, what docks into the building?
Yes.
Are... That is not limited. It is one per 20,000 square feet. To compare it to what currently exists, it'd be one space per 40,000. That doesn't phase up exactly at 40,000. So when you get to 40,000 to 100,000 spaces, you only need two. So this is a little higher than what our current minimums are.
Okay.
There... I think what you caught on to was the max tractor-trailer parking spaces. So when they're not in the loading dock and they're parked elsewhere, there is a maximum of two per loading bay. So you would only be able to have, you know, three total trucks per loading space on site.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out, given the square footage of the lots here involved, how many... Roughly, how many?
How many?
Loading bays could there be, and therefore, how many trucks?
Yeah.
This is not Route 46. This is a much more local road.
Yeah, more specifically, Mr. Dinsmore, is there a limitation on the square footage of the building?
Well, that would be limited by the building impervious coverage.
Okay, and how much is that?
That is... 40%?
So 40%, and these lots are...
No.
It's 10 acres? So effectively, that works out to... 174,000 square foot building would be your absolute max.
Well, that begs the question of the buffer to the residential areas, because this is...
Because you could have nine loading bays based on that estimate, I think?
That's what it sounded like.
Yeah.
Yep.
Which means 27 tractor-trailers could be on the lot?
I mean, that would be your absolute maximum.
Maximum.
No, I'm just... And what did you say was the buffer requirements to the residential areas?
So the setback part is 10 feet.
To the residential areas?
To a resident... For the parking lot entirely, the loading areas.
I mean, haven't all of our other warehouse areas had a bigger buffering area to residential areas?
They have.
I think recently, we discussed 50 feet for the area around Jefferson Road, where it was backing into the Mazda Brook. That was a few weeks ago.
We do require... The plan does require buffering. Let me find out exactly where it is. It also requires a minimum of one tree per 25 parking spaces, so we're including some additional green space there. And you can't put buffering or parking in a buffering area. Screening and buffering shall be achieved through walls, fences, landscaping, should be a minimum of five feet tall, should be visually impervious, and... So we are requiring buffering.
Are all loading bays facing Parsippany Road?
I believe that was the plan. I believe that was the plan. I am
No, we're not doing site plan.
I'm sorry, I don't have this at the top of my
How much of this falls into the site plan instead of this concept?
Right. So this, this provides your minimum maximums. Whatever application ultimately is proposed will have to come before the board and you'll have a chance to
So at site plan, the number of docks and the amount of traffic that's gonna, gonna happen?
They will have to
Those, all, all those discussions occur
All those things do occur.
At the site plan?
Yeah.
No, no, no. Those happen now, don't they? Because at site plan, they'll be able to limit, or to go up to whatever limitation is established at this, well, if we approve, we currently have a facility that can accommodate nine bays and 27 trucks on their lot.
Correct.
If we approve it, then that's what they can build, and this, and the site plan won't be able to say no to that.
Not if, not, not if we have traffic problems and we're gonna limit it some way. That, that road is heavily traveled.
They won't need variances for that, though. It will be, it will be approved within the, within zoning.
Yeah, but we're within site plan because this particular area is smaller than the size requirements of the zone. We would have a bit more room to buffer, but I, I agree with you that we, we need to be very careful with what we permit here, so that we don't end up with truck traffic and noise spilling over by the school or by the residents.
We have residences on the north and the south.
Right.
Yeah.
So we have to, we have to, we spent an awful lot of time trying to fix the UPS place not too long ago, and we have to provide at least that kind of buffering, in my opinion, to this location if, if we're gonna do warehousing and have big rig truck traffic there.
And I think this area is, this area being, or sitting as a whole, is a great place for warehousing, so don't get me wrong. Just this site specifically, you know, especially with it being Persippany, Persippany Boulevard, which has Landadex across the street, the neighborhood is already complaining about traffic, now you're gonna have tractor trailers at, at any time, really.
It's gonna be a difficult, a difficult thing. We have to, we have to really think about how this fits into the master plan here and figure out a way to make sure that this location is usable by the owner and doesn't make the residents have great difficulty.
Are there any limitations for the hours of operation as well? Because, you know, I know warehouses can get started.
Yeah.
They can run 24 hours a day, so if we don't create limitations for that operation, that could be a problem also.
Um, I, it's not in this plan. I can say the buffers required are at least 20 feet along the front edge of the property on Persippany Road, the western parcel adjacent to the school, and the southern parcel adjacent to the R4 zone. So there are required buffers of 20 feet. You can't put the parking or loading in them, so essentially it does require them to be further away.
I'm just envisioning that truck backing up at 4:00 AM
Yeah.
Into a bay, which, which by the way, would happen all the time. I'm, I'm a supply chain person, work in warehouses all the time, so, you know, 4:00 AM is not an unusual time for a warehouse to start loading and unloading.
And the other thing that, you know, there, there's a redevelopment agreement involved in these properties, and some of these concerns can be addressed when the council and the attorneys, you know, discuss the redevelopment agreement.
I must admit, my knowledge of this is not what it should be. Are there any other zones where we allow warehouses where the buffering is this small?
Um Be the ROL.
Yeah, I, because I've seen a lot of cases where it's 50 feet or, or
And we have had increased buffering in some of those zones. I
Because we'd have to, with site plan, perhaps, we'd have to structure something so that the backup beepers of the trucks is not heard in the schoolhouse or in the bedroom of the residents.
Uh huh.
I mean, and that's, that's just because this is a mixed use area.
Correct.
I think it, it's comparative that we take very great care in how we structure this.
So I'm not aware of other zones that have smaller buffers. I know from the recent applications, they've had larger buffers, but really, this is a, looking at the master plan and whether or not it's, or
Yeah.
This plan's consistent with that.
So for my part in this, I'd, I'd rather have the buffer in place and have the site plan request a variance against it.
Uh huh.
That, that would be more appropriate for me.
So, I mean, you, you can make that recommendation to the council, but ultimately, they're gonna be the ones who approve it. What the planning board does is
I, I wouldn't be able to find this consistent with the master plan if it's disrupting the, the neighborhoods that are surrounding it. I, I mean, so that, so I'm, I'm trying to find ways that we can make this acceptable.
Um, I mean, you can make that recommendation that the buffer area should be increased.
Now, I'm also concerned about the traffic flow on Persippany Boulevard, too. I think the, the exit would remain on the Landadex Road to the north end of the property, which seems like an appropriate exit, and I believe a new traffic signal is going in as a result of the property across the way, so that, you know, it should be able to, at least from a traffic signal perspective, be okay, but, you know, you've got the bridge to the left going into, which, which is constantly congested, going to the right, you're constantly congested, and now with the additional property across the way, I, I'd have a lot of concerns. Is that reasonable? I'm happy to hear other opinions.
Well, here's what I will say. I believe that all the, all the bays are front and Persippany Road. When I became the mayor again, one thing I did say I wanted to do was repurpose areas like this for a reason. I know you're concerned about traffic, but I'd be more concerned about what's gonna go there next if we don't rezone this. I'm not kidding you, I've been through this rodeo before, and I'm gonna tell you right now, I know, and I know you're gonna get housing over there. Because that's one way they can circumvent everything that we just talked about, because once you don't want a part of a housing element, all the rules, all the outside traffic means nothing. Doesn't mean a thing. So we're here tonight, and I am at least, I'm here tonight to repurpose an area and need a redevelopment that's gonna best work for the town. We don't have choices, we can't afford to buy the land, we can't afford to make it a playground, we can't afford to do any of that, because I can't imagine what the value of that property is right now, considering if they can't put a warehouse on it, and what the value will go to if they could put housing on it. That's, that's, that's where I am right now. I, and I get all the setbacks, I get all this stuff that, you know, we're talking about now, but if we don't repurpose this to what it needs to be repurposed, they're gonna do it for us. They're gonna take care of it, they're gonna go in, inherently beneficial use, and before you know it, you're gonna, you think you're gonna have traffic, you're gonna have it now at Landadex, but you're gonna have more, because you're gonna have another housing element to the, to the west of it. So this is how I'm looking at it. This is, and I've been through this before when I became a township administrator, and nothing's as egregious as what's happened in Persippany and Monville. But at least when I was in the smaller towns, they still had to work, work with it, and they hadn't found a way to repurpose. If we don't repurpose this, then you will, we're not gonna have much of a choice. You saw it happen with Whole Foods, you saw it happen with Landadex, and to know, to know, you know, to the former mayor and to, not just the former mayor, to the, the board, you had no choice but to approve it. Because if you didn't approve it, the courts were gonna approve it for you. So that's where, where I stand with all this right now. And then when the application comes in, like the council, council vice president said, well, I'm sorry, the chair, yeah, he's still council vice president no matter what, said, you know, this is what we're gonna be doing, we'll, we'll deal with it on the application.
Yeah, the concern I have, what can we build in now? When these trucks back up and you get that beeping sound, you know, whatever their hours of operation are, you do have residential areas, you do have a school, what can we do here now to, to help the council prepare the proper ordinance? A, a greater buffer setback from the school might be a suggestion, and require a buffering of, adequate buffering in that direction and in their direction. It's, it's to back up and loading, that, that, the operation itself, that's the problem. How, how much of that can we address here now? That will direct the, the council to prepare the proper ordinance.
So for the loading areas and their driveways and other access points, how it's written is, shall be appropriately screened and landscaped from view so as to be aesthetically pleasing and minimize direct views from adjacent properties, public or private driveways, and to minimize spill over glare, noise, exhaust fumes, or other nuances. That gives the planning board quite a bit of discretion as to what that looks like at site plan.
Now, in a preview, on an application earlier tonight, we heard somebody who wants to put something with 72 decibels on the edge of their property, and the, the problem I have with, the question that I have here is where, what, is, is there a, a performance standard or something like that that could make it so that backing up trucks?
They're, they're still that, they're, they're still bound by all the performance standards that currently exist. That is explicitly in the plans.
That makes me feel somewhat better, because we have an ordinance for noise.
Yeah.
Especially in the, in certain hours of the day, it's, it's more strict.
Well, at, at site plan is where we can impose hours of operation where they, when they back up. I mean, we don't want it in the middle of the night or four o'clock in the morning when residents are trying to sleep, or in, in the middle of the school day.
Right.
So we can do a site plan.
You also have redevelopment agreement negotiations.
One of the comments that you made was, the building is gonna be generally located where you, where it is currently, at least closer to the road?
It would be oriented in the same fashion. The, the plan provides for it to be oriented in that.
Is there a requirement for that? Because what I'm thinking is, as a site plan, if you use the building as the buffer, as the screen to the school, and you put all the, as the chairman said, or, I mean, as the mayor said, all of the parking in the front. So instead of putting the parking in the circulation behind the building and the building closer to the road, you put the building further back, and you're using that to shield any of the noise, and all of the truck traffic is along the roadway.
The plan encourages the parking in the side and rear yards.
Parking or docking?
Parking.
Docking would only be in the front?
Docking, I
Well, that's what, the issue is, the truck's backing up. That's docking.
Yeah.
So I would want the, I would want the docking to be in the front.
It is my understanding that, that is where it would be.
But for this one, we have to make sure that the, you know, that the zoning that's going to be placed over here
Uh huh.
Is, is something that will, you know, it, it, you know, will, will be safe for our community, I guess, is, is a very bad way of saying it, but, you know, so I don't have a problem necessarily with a warehouse, but the size of the warehouse is, is a little concerning with the number of bays and number of trucks, because we're talking about those moving out onto the Landadex Road.
If we limit, if we limit the docking
Yeah.
To being facing Persippany Boulevard, then Gordon will tell you that that kinda puts a limit on how many trucks can be handled.
Well, it puts a limit on how many people would wanna then grab the property.
Because you're, if you're, if you're limiting everything to the Persippany Boulevard side of the building, there's only a certain amount of space there, so, so the traffic studies and the turning motions of the trucks are probably going to seriously limit the total number of trucks.
I, I guess what I'm saying is, you know, instead of the 20,000 square feet per, per bay, if we left it at the standard 40,000, then they could come to us with a variance if they, if they felt that was an appropriate thing to do.
The standard isn't one per 40,000, though. It, it kinda scales up based on the size of the building, so it, what currently exists doesn't really work for warehousing.
Well, then we could choose the number of bays that we think is appropriate for that space, and then, you know, let, let's say it's five, maybe that's something that's a reasonable thing to, to use for, for this sized property, et cetera, and then if they need more, they can come to us for variance.
I think I'd work that through site plan myself.
Yeah.
I, I get your point.
The variance would be approved during site plan, so they provide us the site plan, we can see the whole picture at that point, but this way, we're protecting ourselves from them being able to say, well, I don't need a variance for that.
Well, they still have to, they will still need preliminary file on major site plan, so you still have control from the site plan, it doesn't have to be just variance or anything.
But, but if they don't have a, if they don't need a variance at that point, what's, what's our
They could have issues
Position for saying no?
They could have issues with parking, they could have issues with circulation, they could have issues with part, um
But we can't say no on the basis of the docking bays at that point.
No, but you can, you can
And that's my point.
You could deny for site plan issues.
Okay.
It's causing
It's, it's much stronger if you can say, no, you need a variance for that, and we don't like that. It's a much stronger case for, for us.
But there is, there's an inherent difficulty, because you don't have a plan in front of you, of, don't knowing what that's gonna look like until somebody puts a plan in front of you.
That's the reason why we have zoning rules in place. The, the builder has to conform within the building rules or ask for variances.
I actually think the traffic question and the turning and moving motions of the, of the trucks is gonna end up being a big, big factor for how many bays they can have.
And keep in mind, those, those trucks are gonna be making that noise at that intersection at 4:00 AM as well, as they idle waiting for the, for the light to change.
To give you an idea of what some other towns have for warehousing, and this is just because I worked with this town.
Okay.
Wall, New Jersey, theirs is one per 10,000 square feet, so they'd have twice as many loading bays as we're suggesting.
Wall Township is right on the turnpike, though. I've seen those, those, I've been in those warehouses.
Yeah, it's not on the turnpike.
Red line in the back.
Yeah, 500,000 square foot warehouse, things work a little differently. And they probably only use about a third of those bays at any given time, too.
Well, our, our task here is to find that this is consistent with the master plan, and then have the, the council work out.
Yeah.
I do think that having a list of our concerns attached to our recommendation to the council might be an appropriate way to approach this, because the, anything we suggest, they, they may turn around and take it a different way.
Unless we find it inconsistent altogether, and then they have to start from scratch. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
They can come back with a revised plan, but if you don't give them concerns, they don't know what really to revise.
I think we've expressed some concerns already.
Has anybody recorded our concerns?
Buffer.
Buffer, buffer, buffer. Well, I mean, certainly
Loading docks on the straight side.
Noise, traffic.
The, the traffic issue is huge, and I think whatever, any site plan that comes before us is gonna have a traffic problem regardless. I really believe that.
And, but like any other site plan, they'll be required to have a traffic study.
They'll have to have a traffic study. I also think they're gonna have a noise problem and the performance standards with the residential, if they don't find a way to buffer them. So having a building with all of the bays in the front by Persipony Boulevard So having a building with all of the bays in the front by Persippany Boulevard is probably going to be the only route that they can follow.
And that's the effective front yard, correct?
Yes.
It's going to be the effective front yard. It's going to be the actual front yard. So loading in the front yard and then I, was there a suggested increase of the buffer? Did you say it was 20 feet currently?
It is currently 20 feet.
Is that to all properties or only to residential? Are we...
It is to...
Differentiated between residential properties and non-residential properties?
Well, you've got school.
Yeah, well, the residential zones and Persippany Road, there's 20 foot buffer required.
Persippany Road or Persippany Boulevard?
Oh, sorry, Persippany Boulevard.
So, okay, so that would still just be like a landscaping buffer area. You can actually reduce that if you want the parking in the front.
They would require...
To 10 feet.
Right, they would require a variance though for, or deviation for requesting that reduction in the buffer.
And then between this use and any residential is a requirement for there to be plantings and some sort of visual reduction?
Yes, between the residential zones, there's required.
But you only have a 10-foot buffer right there by the school.
20 foot.
20.
Or now it's 20?
If there could be some clarification as to, because right now it's 20 foot from the school. Is there anything that the board wants to, you know? In essence, say 20 foot, be specific, is it all boundary lines? Because obviously 50 foot, if you're going to increase it, for instance, all around might make for a difficult site plan. You're not really looking to protect Persippany Boulevard sign. You want the parking there, you want the loading there. Does it make sense to limit that to, and then increase towards the school and the residential? And I need some numbers because in order to give the council some guidance, I kind of need some...
Well, we're going to have to require some sort of buffering between any residential or school.
The only place where there's a non-residential buffer is on Persippany Boulevard in that little corner, right?
You just have the funeral home.
That is a residence. The funeral home is a residence.
But it...
It's a magical slum.
It's zoned business and I think the, the buffer specifically says zones.
It's too bad they're not here then.
So if we leave it general to say increased buffers from, to school and residential properties and require loading to be in the front yard along Persippany Boulevard?
Yes.
Is that general enough and then the council will have the ability to determine the actual?
See, I don't want to be general here. I don't want the council to know exactly what they need. I mean, this, this is...
Well, I think we can, we can say that we would find that any loading docks that are within a certain distance or would interfere with either the school or the residential areas would not be consistent with the master plan. And that only the ones that would make it so that they were not going to interfere with residential or scholastic purposes would be consistent with the master plan.
So then are we saying that that needs to be rewritten and then brought back to us? Because, you know, it's not, it's not in the, it's not in the zoning now. It's not written on this.
Yep.
It's not written into the status stamp.
I mean, I want, I would like to find a way to make this work for the reasons that our mayor stated. But we have to be very certain that all of our performance standards don't get trampled by the reality that something ended up getting built. And, I mean, I've been here long enough to know that our performance standards are not always enforced the way they should be. They usually are, but not always.
Well, I mean, it seems, it seems to me that if you're going to increase the buffer from the school and the residential zone, you're pushing the activities closer to Persippany Boulevard. That's where the residential properties are, that's where the school is. At the bottom of that, of that rendering are also the additional residential. You're then pushing it, I guess that's, is that north? I don't know what direction that is.
North is...
North, that's up, okay. So you're pushing it east and north. And that's what you want. That's kind of achieving the goal of moving the activities away from the residential properties and the school and closer to the road.
And north is also residential. As I, yeah, that's a residential property, it's not a residential zone.
It's residential property but not a zone.
Right.
Basically, three sides of that are either residential or school.
Is it a residential property or is it a historic property?
This is a residential house. It's been a residential house since 1752.
Should, should we take some, some testimony from members of the public on this?
Good idea.
Is it historic, is it a museum or is it actually?
It's a residence.
These fine people here.
Yes.
That's what I heard, historic.
All right, and we have some pictures which might help you understand it a little better. I gave this to Nora. And so, and I think maybe some...
Just name and address for the record.
Julia Peterson, 25, Old Persippany Road.
Thank you.
Okay. This is my husband.
Yeah, I'm going to swear you both in because you're going to be providing some exhibits and testimony.
Yes.
Please both raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes. Okay, I have a couple of questions. First, should I do the testimony first and then ask questions or?
Yeah.
Okay. She's handing out a page, it's a three-page set of photos. The first page is our picture of our house, a picture of the house across the street and looking down Old Persippany Road. Old Persippany Road is the original Persippany Road, the Indian path and Washington's route to West Point. It was dead-ended in 1972 because Route 80 is right off the end of there. And there's a picture of Governor Livingston Park, which is also right there. If you go to the next page, and the next page, I can show you where this is on the, on the map and that will probably help you. This is the roof of our house. This is the barn. It's from 1880, it's this red structure here. I took this picture standing in the middle of the driveway to the Lanedex building that's down below. So the, the property line actually runs through the corner of the barn. And the road is over here. The property line is right here. This little area is a buffer for there, but it doesn't apply in this one. Then the next picture is the driveway which goes down to 10 Lanedex, which is the building that's here, fully occupied office building, really beautiful inside. And this is a picture of this building, how it looks from in our yard and how it looks if you're standing on the property line. And then on the last page, there's a picture of in here, which is actually a wetland. It's a vernal pool, still has water in it now in August almost. And this backs up to the Partracino Home, which is here. And then there's a picture of Eastlake School through here and a picture of the fence line from Eastlake School. Eastlake School is very close. And right here is the gym and the music rooms and a classroom. So that's window exposure into that. There's a hill here, there's a pretty steep hill here down from Persippany Road down to this building. So if you were going to have bays, you'd have to back this all the way back there just to get room or else you'd have, I mean, this is a steep slope here. Okay. Now I'll just read you my little thing, which you also have a copy of. So this was originally a dairy farm, it was part of the Olson Dairy Farm, Marlette Farms, which was across the street. Lanedex East became part of that too. Mr. Olson wanted to sell his land to Lanedex West and it was going to be an ROL zone. At that time, ROL zones were proposed to people living near them because it was, looked like it was going to be, they were going to increase ratables, but they weren't going to impact the surrounding residential zone. So my parents, in an effort to continue to preserve this house, which is almost 300 years old, decided that if they sold the land for the building in back, that it would help preserve our house. The ROL thing was supposed to be congruent buildings. So you can see from the photographs I've given you that 10 Lanedex West and 30 Lanedex West look pretty much alike. So it's, you know, nice that they did. 30 Lanedex, the building in the area we're talking about, was redone about 15 years ago to have Solix have their headquarters there. So it received about $2 or $3 million of renovations so Solix could be there. But Solix had 400 employees. So there wasn't any room for them to put another building there. They had to build parking because they needed all those spaces. So that's why that, that lot, 3.2, is empty because there wasn't, they couldn't build a building there and apply the parking. So during the pandemic, Solix moved to the building in back. And for a while, everything went along fine and then all of a sudden, we noticed that nobody was maintaining 30 Lanedex. And last year, they had to take the owners to court to get the lawn mowed. And then you have a copy of the sign that we saw when the water was shut off in April of this year. But before the water was shut off, I'm told, there was a flooding situation which was never remedied. So supposedly, the interior of this building is mold ridden.
This is why we're here.
And the biggest problem, I think, I mean, I'm all for economic development. I understand that if you send this back to the council, the council's ready to do the ordinance and it'll be a done deal. Everybody says it's a done deal already. That's the phrase that people are using, it's a done deal.
I'm not entirely sure that's relevant here.
No, I'm sure it's not. Sorry. The thing is, if this is, becomes a common practice, any building owner can do this. Turn on the flood, have some mold conditions. And most of us around there that live there, I'm very concerned about how they can possibly demolish a building that's full of mold without remediating. And not only are we going to be impacted by tractor trailer noise...
This, this part is beyond our remit, right here. There are other...
Okay.
New Jersey Department of Health has...
Okay, so my question is, how does the Highlands...
They would, like any other site plan, they would have to apply for the Highlands exemption also.
Okay, so in Plan A, there's a list of people that have to approve this use or anything. And it's quite a few, including Morris County Soil Erosion, Morris County Planning Board.
Ma'am, this is, I have to, this is like the first step of a very long process. So, hold on a second, hold on a second. I'm trying to put it into perspective. This is the council's action of introducing the ordinance and sending it to site plan, introducing the redevelopment plan. It was the first step. Where, what you're talking about Morris County Soil Conservation and Highlands is for the site plan, which is, we don't even have an applicant. We don't even know, you know, there's, that's way down the road.
All right, so tell me what the other steps are that anybody will be able to have an answer to.
Well, there is this step. If the planning board determines it is consistent with the master plan, they send it back to the council. The public will be notified of the, of the adoption of the redevelopment plan. And you have to give them the opportunity to speak at that public session before the governing body.
Which is tomorrow.
Okay, well, I don't know if this is going to make it to their agenda tomorrow. I don't, I don't know that.
It's on their agenda.
Okay. And then an applicant has to come in with a, to get all their engineering and all of their architecture and how the plan is going to work. And then they would have to comply with this plan and come back to this board for a full-blown public hearing on how the site and the use are going to work on, on the site in the confines of the redevelopment plan. And the board will have full input and authority over that, as will the public have the opportunity to participate. As will, Highland Development will be provided an application and they'll provide their comments, as will Morris County Soil Conservation, as will the township engineer, as will the township planner. So everybody will then look at that in more detail because then at that point, you have a specific plan that's going to be reviewed. Right now, this is just the ordinance and setting the parameters. So again, this is kind of the first step of the process.
Okay, now, but you're talking about whether this is congruent with this master plan?
Correct.
Okay. And when I open it to the goals, I understand the need for economic redevelopment, I really, really do. There isn't a, I don't know where it is in here, in these goals. You know, there's a lot about sustainability and adequate this and adequate that. But it isn't as direct in this master plan as it is in the way it was written in the ordinance that is being presented. And so I appreciate your input and thank you for listening. Okay, thanks.
Okay.
You want John to speak too, since we have the public?
Yes, indeed, we've got another interested individual who would like to speak to us.
Can I ask a question to the witness before they depart? Is that possible?
Sure, why not?
Do you mind if I ask?
No, no, no.
When this building was occupied?
Yeah.
Could you talk about the traffic that was on, that you had witnessed on your, on your road? Coming in and out? When the building was occupied?
Yeah, they were cars.
Right.
Foreign cars, no problem. Back and forth, people still, there's a lot of in and out of this. Recently, Lanedex East was parking construction materials here on tractor trailer trucks. It was unbelievably noisy because it's a hill. You know, what a tractor trailer truck needs to do to go up a hill, very noisy. What they do when they go down the hills, they put on the jake brakes, very noisy.
And are you able to like say, cross the street there safely with all these trucks and cars going in and out there?
Well, you have to be very careful.
Right, but is there crosswalks right there?
There is no crosswalk.
Okay.
They've been installed here.
But if you want, I don't know if you have a dog or something, you want to walk your dog in that grassy area, you wouldn't be able to cross?
You will, depending on the time of day.
Okay.
But there are, as you're all well aware, going to be not many. I added it up, I mean, there are going to be like 2,000 people living right here. And I don't know what they're going to do.
Well, that's... Thank you.
It seems to me that there must be some other possible uses that we need that would encourage economic development.
Okay, John?
Thank you. John Iglesino from the, well, from the Iglesino Taylor, representing the owner of the property. A few things tonight that I heard that were just not accurate, it's not a local road. Persippany Road is a county road. It is
True.
by definition, not a local road.
I was wrong when I said local.
That's point one. Point two is, is that this is an office building that is vacant. It's been vacant in excess of three years. It is in deleterious condition. The board has seen that. The board, in fact, recommended that the property qualifies as an area of needed redevelopment. And the council agreed with that and declared it as a needed redevelopment. The owner has given extensive thought and activity for what uses are viable on this property. And there are two or three, fulfillment centers, warehouse, or multifamily residential. property. And there are two or three: fulfillment centers, warehouse, or multifamily residential.
Hotel?
Not hotel.
Okay.
I mean, you know, not viable. If you want to buy the property and put hotel on it, I can put you in touch with my client, and you're free to do that. Your planner read language from the master plan directly that speaks to manufacturing and uses for which this is, I don't see how you could say is not consistent with the master plan. Your planner also read you a lot of discretionary language because I think everybody understands that there's going to be a lot of attention paid to issues regarding impacts on surrounding uses to this property. I can tell you and I can represent to you, and I just texted with my client, all the bays are going to be in the front, orienting towards Parsippany Road. There's no question about that. The only parking, maybe employee parking, towards the back. And that's it. The bays, the truck traffic, all of that...
In the back, you mean, towards the school, towards the school will be in the back?
Yeah. Yeah. All of the activity in terms of the truck, the loading, is going to be oriented towards Parsippany Road and will be screened from Parsippany Road. So you won't see it from the roadway. And candidly, that's why that discretionary language was put into the plan. Because nobody can sit here and foresee every issue or every impact without a site plan and without going through the exercise that you go through here in terms of seeing plans, hearing from witnesses, and getting the detailed understanding of the impact. You can't do that, sitting here at a master plan consistency review. It's impossible. Your planner has recommended bulk standards in consultation, or at least they heard what the owner had to say with the planner, based upon their expertise and knowledge, based upon industry standards, et cetera, have made recommendations with regard to the bulk standards. We don't believe that it would be appropriate to just throw in arbitrary numbers. Well, 50 feet looks good here. 20 feet looks good there. That's not the way this process is supposed to work. But we understand that irrespective of what the standards are, that if there are impacts, if there are perceived impacts that the board sees through site plan, that you have the discretion to require us to do less. That's why the language that is in the redevelopment plan is there, to maximize discretion for the board, to protect its residents against impacts that it reasonably perceives are going to be generated through the project. That's your job. Nobody's saying you shouldn't be able to do that. And candidly, we were fine with that language going into the plan to give you that discretion. And we feel that's what's appropriate here. You know, in terms of hours of operation, I don't, the thought is, and these facilities run 24/7. They don't run, you know, five hours a day. I mean, if we couldn't do it in the middle of the day, we couldn't do it at night, then you don't want a warehouse here. You may as well build multifamily housing. Maybe we should. You got housing over here, you got housing across the street. Maybe it is a good site for multifamily housing. And if that's a use that the town would prefer, my client would be fine with multifamily housing here. But our understanding that that's, is that that is not what the policy of the leadership is here in town, that you'd be looking for an alternative use. And one, yes, that would have to fit into the neighborhood and not create adverse impacts. That's why we felt, and I can say, you know, here as part of the record, we'll absolutely agree as part of any site plan application that the bays are going to orient towards Parsippany Road. That is what is contemplated. Mr. McDonald was exactly correct when he said that's how you mitigate any noise impacts, is that's what you do. Now, in terms of the building, I don't know where the building will extend on a site plan relative to, you know, adjoining use. I think you have a funeral parlor, interesting residents there on one side. Is the building, if it's screened, is that an impact? I don't know. I mean, that's something that would have to be determined through site plan. But that's not a noise impact issue. So all I'm saying is, is that the board is going to have a tremendous amount of discretion through site plan, reviewing plans, to look at these issues in the context of what is presented in front of them, knowing that you have the discretion to, you know, require, you know, whatever is needed to mitigate impacts. The biggest thing we felt was, or is having all the bays oriented towards Parsippany Road. We understand that there's going to be circulation issues. There's going to have to be a circulation study with the trucks. They're going to have to be able to come in and circulate throughout the property. And by the way, the circulation plan is the same generally as what it is today. You know, there's no plan, and the plan does not provide for trucks to come in off of Parsippany Road on the north end and then exit on the south end. That's not the plan. They have to be able to circulate internally and come back out to the signalized intersection. I'm sure you're going to want circulation plans that are going to be able to show how that can be accomplished and how that can be accomplished safely. And you need to review those, and you need to be satisfied that that can be done. So again, all those issues are site plan issues. And that's where we think those issues should be discussed and vetted and heard, not as part of a master plan consistency review where the only question before the board is, is it consistent with the master plan? Again, I think your planner read the language right out of the master plan where it is. And number two, the language that gives the board additional discretion at site plan. And we were fine with that language going in the plan. It's a little bit over and above what I think the board ordinarily have discretion on, but, you know, we were okay with that. And your planner's correct. There will ultimately be a redevelopment agreement. So it's not a situation, you know, when you're in redevelopment, it's redevelopment plan, it's site plan, but there's also a redevelopment agreement. And that redevelopment agreement can put further restrictions, and most often does put further restrictions on a redevelopment. So, you know, we would ask or hope that the board would find it consistent. You know, time is an issue. This property's been sitting. It's been sitting, and so time is definitely an issue. And thank you for your consideration.
Before you step away, doesn't the board have more standing if there is language or if the application comes with variances, though? Don't we have more standing in site plan review?
I mean, you can, well, I don't know what you mean by standing. You don't have any...
Standing to reject the project.
More ability to reject the project?
Yes.
Yes. And you can also exercise that right to the point of where people say, I'm not going to invest the capital in that project.
That's a fair point.
That's the other side of the equation. And so what we were trying to do was to agree upon standards based upon the recommendation of your professional, and then give the board that extra discretion, which your planner read into the record, at site plan so that these issues could be addressed in the context of an actual plan before the board, and not in some haphazard way where there is no plan before the board. That was the theory, that was the thinking there.
You know, I guess my position is coming from when we did do the affordable housing. Oh, I was very junior at the time, and the overlay zones were thrown at us, told us, you've got to accept these as they are, or, you know, we're going to have these thrown on us. And there's, we're not going to have any discretion as far as what goes there. I feel like those projects, when they came through site plan review, we had very little standing to say anything about them. The buffers, as it were.
I think that's a very different circumstance where you have, we have a legal force behind that. It's not just a redevelopment agreement. It's a court saying, we have to do this.
Sure, sure. I still felt like we lacked the ability to push when it came to site plan review at that time.
We didn't have any ability to push.
By law, you're supposed to relax those kinds of requirements.
Yeah, and by the way... I'm trying to preserve those now, is what I'm saying.
But your settlement agreement, again, I think the chairman's right, two entirely different contexts.
Sure.
Your settlement agreement in Parsippany is not unlike all the other settlement agreements negotiated with Joe's office that happened over the years. And, you know, they're all, from a development perspective, I mean, you're obligated to grant variances under those settlement agreements.
Yeah.
There are concept plans that are attached to the settlement agreement that say, you're going to permit this. So the boards in those, in that context, does have very little discretion.
But in this instance, we're not required to do those things. And so I'd like to preserve them. And I would rather have a presentation of a site plan with six variances than one that has zero variances, and I have no standing to say anything about it.
Then, then the applicant, what's the point of applying?
Oh, if they have to...
If what you're saying is, is that, you know, spend a few hundred thousand dollars on detailed engineering, and we're just going to sit here and decide whether you have a viable project or not a site plan, then you're not going to have an applicant.
Okay.
You're going to have multifamily housing.
Well, so is there a middle ground here? Because, you know, a 10-foot buffer, you know, whereas this, the standard that we have today, I believe it's 50 feet, sounds like it's a...
First of all, I don't think you have your numbers correct.
It's 20.
20.
It's 20-foot buffer on industrial properties?
Mr. Van Oken, I don't pretend to be a professional planner.
Okay.
Okay? It's not what I do. I'm not certified as a planner. It's not my line of business.
I don't mean to make you testify.
Right. But I rely upon the standards that the professionals recommend as a starting point. That's me. I did that when I was on the municipal side as an elected official. I do that applicant side. Because bottom line is, what can this property handle? Here are the professionals. You figure it out as a recommendation, okay? That's what's happened here.
Yeah.
Now, I don't know what your qualifications are. I don't know whether you're a planner. I don't know.
I run supply chain for America.
But then maybe that qualifies you to determine, you know, what the best buffers are as a matter of ordinance. But I can tell you that if you regulate a property or a project into, you know, unviability from the beginning, then don't expect an application to come forward for what you're going to be doing, for a warehouse. It's just not. Why would you? Now, that's, and that's not to say that the impacts don't have to be addressed because they do.
Yeah.
No, we have, I think we have plenty of room, site plan, to redirect.
Do I get to say I told you so?
Have you ever been stopped?
Okay, you got me there.
All right. Any other questions?
I have a comment. I believe Mr. Iglesino is taking our concerns to his client. I'm thinking, he will try to let him know, let them know that there's a school behind this property, and, you know, there's residents across the way, and they all need to take into consideration when they come through with your, with your site plan.
And they will, to the maximum extent that we can think of, and then we'll be happy to take suggestions from the board.
Also, the resident also brought up the fact that there might be wetlands in that southern area. Do you guys plan on doing ecological study?
Well, you have to, I mean, there's going to have to be an LOI, you know, for, obviously, wetlands have to be identified, and then they have to be characterized in terms of what their value is, ordinary or exceptional value. So we'll have to account for that.
They'll have to do all the regular site plan stuff. So if there's wetlands, they'll have to comply with...
What about Section 106?
Sorry?
Section 106.
What is Section 106?
Okay, Section 106.
Sector 7.
A review of the impact on a historic site that's right on this, and if any monies are used by any federal agency or any bank, it can be triggered.
I don't know what Section 106 is. We'll have to comply with all rules and regulations.
I don't think that's actually appropriate at this particular hearing.
I just, I just kind of provide you that there are a lot of things, a lot of hurdles that have to be done. And I think we're all in recognition.
Yeah, this is, this is an important hurdle.
And we can't, with the house that we live in, is unimperable because of tractor-trailer noise and all kinds of other things.
You'll, if there is a presentation of a site plan, you'll have plenty of opportunity to present evidence at that time that this is inappropriate given your residential.
Whether it's appropriate or not, we can't continue to just preserve this house without some help from the town of just a very symbolic energy. And that's all. Thank you.
Yep, okay. I think this covers everything.
Well, I guess I have a couple of things. First of all, I think if we hold the hard line when it comes to site plan on the 75% impervious, that almost equates to a 50-foot buffer around the exteriors of the property, everything except the Parsippany Road. I mean, I just did some quick land calculations while we were all talking. And I basically got that if we had a 50-foot buffer area around it, we'd get about 70% maximum impervious coverage. I will tell you, I have one problem with a small piece of this, which actually is the parking ratio. But I just looked through our master plan, and I don't see the word parking in there anywhere. I don't know who was responsible for that, John. But, yeah. But anyway, that's, so I don't see how I can bring that into the conversation tonight. Even though, because I believe, I wish I'd had time to review the specifics of this plan in advance. I can't promise I would have, but I would have liked the opportunity to. And one thing I would have looked up is what an appropriate parking ratio is for a warehouse. And I, because on, my recollection, I think it's one for every 1,000 square feet, not for one for every 2,500.
I think that's, that's accurate. So, for parking.
So, yeah, we started including that in our notes. One for every 1,000, you think, is accurate?
That the standard is. And where this plan proposes, one for every 2,500.
So that means 70 parking spaces for 175,000-square-foot office building. And I believe 30% of it can be land backed. That's 50 parking spaces, which may be enough for a user, but I would rather grant a variance for parking for a specific user than allowing anyone to just develop a small number of parking spaces. But once again, I cannot, being conscientious, having not seen the word parking anywhere in our, in our master plan, say that that's inconsistent with the master plan.
Okay, so we can put that on our list of concerns?
Yes, thank you.
To the council. All right, anything further from members of our board? Hearing and seeing none. I guess this closes the evidentiary portion of tonight's hearing. Not that that's really... Is there a desire for a discussion, or do we want to go right to a resolution?
I would just say, you know, it's probably pretty obvious to everybody, not in favor of this use necessarily. And I would cite that the basis for that is, is that this use compared to the zoning around it is a concern. I believe one of the measures of our master plan, although I don't have it in front of me, is that we maintain appropriate buffers between zones. So that's, that's the basis for my objection.
Okay. Do I have somebody who is willing to move that we find this consistent with the master plan?
I will. I forget how to properly say it. It's supposed to say not inconsistent, or are you just supposed to say approved?
Substantially.
Substantially consistent?
How do you say it?
Substantially consistent.
All right. I move that 20-30 Lanox, the master plan consistency is substantially, what's the word again? Consistent with the master plan.
Do I have a second? All right, any discussion? Nora, would you call the rule, please?
Berberio.
Yes.
DePiero.
Yes.
Math.
Yes.
Palatano.
Yes.
Stenzial.
Yes.
Von Aiken.
No.
Dinsmore.
Yes. All right. Then we will send it off, and you've got a list of things that we've discussed that might be included in the letter to the... All right. Now, we have another small addition to our tonight's agenda.
I don't know where I've been here all day.
What have we got? Let's, Nora, what's the other?
It's the 2 and 3 campus, the area in need redevelopment.
All right, that's right. Okay, everybody, just a moment. We've got, because of some things that have been happening, we've got to have a brief discussion of 2 and 3 campus. So I'm going to turn it to our esteemed planner.
All right.
And she's going to let us know what's going on.
So the Township Council has identified 2 and 3 Campus Drive as a potential area in need of redevelopment and is directing the planning board to do a study. That is the short and sweet version.
So what we're supposed to do is vote and vote to authorize a study to see whether 2 and 3 Campus are appropriate for an area in need of... Campus are appropriate for an area in need of redevelopment.
Just a quick question, they're across the street from each other, right?
Yes.
Okay, so basically they've carved out two of the buildings.
They're currently vacant sites.
Sorry?
They're vacant.
Are they both owned by the same entity or not?
I am not sure.
Have you approved something for 2 Campus? Well, not, no. 2 Campus Drive off 202, you're going to approve 180-something units there?
Yes.
Are those the ones that have apartments on them?
I believe they were approved for apartments.
Approved for apartments. And apartments is part of our affordable housing agreement.
Yes.
And so what are we doing now?
This is to authorize a redevelopment study.
But isn't something approved for that spot?
We've already approved them to build apartments there.
No, but I think there's something else that, in order for them to do it, you just got to read it. I mean, I think it's like a touchscreen.
It's weird when you use the touchscreen.
I think 2, though, was slated to be vacant, though, wasn't it?
No.
Was that the one that was?
2 and 3 are both going to be affordable housing.
Okay.
Apartment.
And 4.
Yeah, 4, too.
Yeah, but this is only addressing 2 and 3.
Yeah, it has to be the boundaries of two properties. I'm pretty sure that's what it has to do with. In order to build the other property, which would not be housing, there's some sort of a study that needed to be done.
So what we're here for is simply to approve having.
This still doesn't make any sense.
Just to do the study.
To do a study for properties you already approved for apartments per court order.
But one property wasn't. One was, I think, and the other property wasn't. So that's what the determination is.
And it's just like the previous redevelopment studies we've done, it's in existing conditions.
I know what redevelopment studies are. My problem is, I believe we've approved those per court order for affordable housing. So why are we doing something different?
I don't think that's the case. Keep going down, up a little.
Well, I'm just going by memory.
You're right.
Your memory and my memory are in consi...
Yeah, number 2 is.
Those are two of the ones you objected to, you were neophyte.
Yeah, yeah.
Those, I think we approved, we were still virtual.
That's two right there. And that's the one that we approved. This one was going to be vacant, and they were carrying it down.
Tom Balakian was the attorney.
Yes, he was. Mr. Tom Balakian.
Tom Balakian, yeah.
And then that's 3 and 4, yeah. Yeah, 2 and 3.
One night.
Has to do with 2 adjoining properties.
So.
So 2, and then the, and then the building in front of 2, closer to Littleton Road?
Do you have knowledge of this thing?
Yeah, this is.
John, we're going to ask John Inglisino to come up and give us a little discussion of why we're here for this.
2 and 3 Campus, Councilman Kuros is correct, is part of your affordable housing plan. It was owned by Matt Calley, Veros. In fact, both of those properties have site plan approval. And you have right now, well, Avalon Bay is the contract purchaser of both of those sites. And they have right now an application for amended site plan on 2 and 3 Campus in the pipeline before the board right now. Those amendments.
Before what board?
This board, to amend the site plan approval.
They haven't gotten through completeness yet.
Let me back up, so 2 and 3.
Who are they going to amend it to? Does that affect affordable housing?
Hold on, I'm going to get there. Give me a chance. Please, give me a chance. So what those amendments are going to do are a couple of things. One is, it's going to change, you know, the amenity layout a little bit, because Avalon Bay knows what it wants to do, and Matt Calley basically had place holders in, they really don't do residential multifamily development. The change on affordable housing is that you're going to be getting fewer affordable housing units, but you're going to be getting the same number of credits. The way they're able to do that is that if you have supportive housing, supportive housing gets credits, co-credits, but they get credits by the bedroom and not by the unit. So if you have one unit that has three supportive housing bedrooms, that one unit gets three credits. If you have family rentals in a three-bedroom, that three-bedroom unit gets one credit. Avalon Bay has made the argument to Fair Share Housing Center, or I've made the argument to Fair Share Housing Center, that there is a shortage of housing to support people who need supportive housing. I represent an autistic school, and once people with autism get to be 21 years old, there's no support system in the state at all. They're on their own. And even if those people can be functional, they have no housing, they have nothing at all. So the affordable housing rules do permit this category of supportive housing to count towards a municipality's affordable housing requirement. And they do it, again, based on the number of bedrooms as opposed to the number of units. From the municipality's perspective, the benefits of doing some of the affordable housing as supportive housing credits is number one. You're providing housing for a segment of the population that is dreadfully underserved today. Number two, the municipality is getting less units. Number three, some people may think this is a benefit, and some people may think it's not a benefit, there are going to be fewer kids, okay, because there's going to be fewer units, and your supportive housing population is going to be made up of adults who need supportive housing and who qualify for supportive housing. We have both reviewed your settlement agreement, and we have had discussions with Fair Share Housing Center. And Fair Share Housing Center supports and will not oppose what we are proposing in terms of a site plan modification, which means there's going to be some fewer units, like 20 or 30 fewer units than what, you know, you were required to have. That's the site plan amendment phase that's happening right now. We feel there's benefits to the municipality, we'll share those with you in more detail when we get to you for site plan approval. And again, Fair Share Housing has signed off, because the last thing we want to do is come in here and say, oh, yeah, there's fewer units, but you have a settlement, and somebody's going to ask, well, what does Fair Share Housing Center have to think about that? So that's the amendment. Avalon wants to do the redevelopment area, and this doesn't concern the planning board, it does concern the municipality, because they want to be able to apply for a pilot. And the public justification for that, or what their idea on that is, is that there's also 7 Campus. Now, it's weird, because it's like, there's no 5 Campus, but there's a 7 Campus. And 7 Campus is next to 3 Campus, 2 Campus is on the other side of the street. The property at 7 Campus is very vulnerable to additional multifamily housing. There's an easement on that property. And the property really can't get developed well unless Avalon, you know, consents to a relaxation of the easement, or that they won't assert their rights with respect to the easement, which they don't need to do on their plan. And so the idea is, is that, you know, if the municipality feels that in order to protect 7 Campus from multifamily housing, that there would at least be some consideration for a pilot, that's what's kind of, you know, motivating this whole discussion.
The pilot is going to be for what building?
2 and 3 Campus.
Those are apartments.
Those are apartments, but again, the benefit.
I will never vote for.
The benefit is, and you don't have to, right? It's not, the benefit is.
I would not vote for a pilot anymore when it involves apartments.
But it's for special needs, right?
No.
No, no, the benefit is, is that you would then prevent 7 from being developed for multifamily if you wanted to limit multifamily on 7. Otherwise, 7 would, you know, Avalon doesn't have a contract.
You're saying you're switching 2 and 3 to do a pilot for?
The idea is, and really, this is not a planning board conversation, I'm just trying to give you context, is that 2 and 3 would still go forward, right? The idea would be that they would at least be eligible for a pilot, but by giving a pilot to 2 and 3, 7 would never be developed as multifamily. That's the concept.
See, when we gave a pilot for UPS, it was great, it did not involve schoolchildren. When you grant a pilot, you're getting paid over a long period of time, and in lieu of taxes, and the school board gets nothing. So now you have apartments, and the school board gets nothing, and they get the kids, but they get no funds.
Well, that's not really true.
It is true.
No, it's not. So when a school board adopts a budget, no matter what that budget is, the school board is guaranteed by law to get 100% of their budget. That's a fact. That's the law of the state of New Jersey. If a school board, I don't know what the numbers are, if a school board budget adopts a budget for $50 million, whether the municipality has given out one pilot, no pilots, or 30 pilots, the schools get $50 million. That's the law of the state of New Jersey. A pilot does not, by operation of law, does not and cannot shortchange what a board of education receives in terms of money from the taxpayers. The only entity that takes the risk on not getting its budget is the municipality, which is why it's.
When the township collects taxes from all the property owners in Precipiny, a portion of those property taxes.
Goes to the school.
Goes to the school board.
And the schools are guaranteed 100% of their.
Now, when we have a pilot, okay, we're not collecting taxes from that, those properties. So no tax dollars go to the school board for those pilots.
Well, it's not exactly true, but I understand your point. So when you have a pilot, there's a land tax, and there's a pilot.
Yeah, they get the land.
The land is still taxed as land. I know it's a little bit confusing, but if I have a multifamily building and I have a pilot, the municipality is sending me a tax bill for the land, okay? I have to pay that tax bill for the land. When that, when those tax dollars are paid to the municipality, it goes to the schools, the county, just like any other tax bill.
That's right, but the land doesn't send children to the school district. The apartments do.
I understand that. But the schools get 100% of their, I'm just saying, because there's a misconception.
I have the purview for that.
Plus, when there's a tax appeal, when there's a tax appeal, the schools don't give us back 63% of the tax appeal. We suck the whole tax appeal up.
The policy question for the council, it's not for the planning board, is to, is to whether or not, A, a pilot would be entertained, again, that's not for this board, that's for the council, and B, is would a pilot be entertained if it prevented 7 Campus from becoming multifamily residential? That's the, that's not for this board, just giving you context, that's where the, so what's odd here is, or irregular, is that you're going to have a redevelopment area study being conducted simultaneously with an amended site plan approval for development. Those are, that's odd. That's not the normal course, right? The normal course is first.
Right now, all that's before us is approving, paying a bill to our planners to do a study.
Right, which has been authorized by the governing body. That's all that's before you tonight.
And that, once we do the study, then we can make a recommendation of the governing body that something be done.
That's correct.
To be determined by the study.
That's correct.
And the governing body can then turn around and say, no pilots, or something to that, I mean, that's not.
That's their decision?
That's their decision.
We have no say in that part?
Nope.
Not us.
So all I'm asking this board to consider at this time is to authorize the payment of a study of whether or not we should do a redevelopment of our redevelopment.
Well, it's not currently under redevelopment. It'd be a redevelopment.
It's an area in need of redevelopment.
So is there a willingness of somebody to make a motion to prove making a study of whether or not we should make this?
Mr. Inglisino, I heard your comments for what was going on with the site plan, but I don't understand why this needs to be the redevelopment. Did I miss something? I must have missed something.
Well, the idea of it being qualified as an area in need of redevelopment. Pardon me. Is that, that is what creates the opportunity for a pilot to be considered. You can't grant a pilot for a project that is not an area in need of redevelopment.
Okay.
By law, you can't do that. It just, by doing the study and declaring it in need of redevelopment, it provides the option to consider a pilot at a later date. Doesn't, you know, demand it or require it, it's just, that's the idea.
And the council would then be in a position to think about it, if they wanted to do it or not.
And the other question that comes up, by the way, in these contexts, Joe knows this, you're a stunned city of Grove, I think you have it written everywhere.
I don't involve many.
Sometimes the process can work what they call on a nunk-pro-tunk basis, meaning now for then. If you have a site plan, and you subsequently go back and declare an area in need of redevelopment, the site plan is still good, as long as it comports with the redevelopment plan. And that's been done on numerous occasions.
I don't see any reason to. Go ahead.
I just want to say, I remember, because this, when I was first appointed to the planning board, I'm pretty sure it was these two projects, and we just sat for hours upon hours upon hours, multiple, multiple nights, virtual, with internet problems, people getting cut off, people losing, I want to hold developers to what they originally planned, we listened to for, I would say, six sessions, maybe more, of all that testimony, so, and I will hold them to it. I'm not in favor of the study.
Well, the study has nothing to do with what's going to be built there.
You just said they changed the whole plan.
No, no, the.
And then want to have the pilot to, like, not build something else.
The amendments to the site plan have nothing to do with the redevelopment area study. Nothing to do with the redevelopment study area at all. That's completely a separate thing. The amendment to the site plan is coming through whether there's a study authorized or not. And, you know, there hasn't right amendments, and I described what they do in terms of supporting housing and reducing the number of units, you know, et cetera. So it has nothing to do with that. The redevelopment area study has nothing to do with the amendment to the site plan.
I mean, if the council wants to spend money, I don't see a reason to hold them up.
So you are moving the motion?
Sure, I will move that, you know, we, what's the proper motion here? I'll move in favor of the.
Approving a study.
If we have money for that, we have money for two more chairs?
No.
No?
Yeah, I will move that 2 and 3 Campus study can, 2 and 3.
Campus Drive.
Campus Drive can be studied as an area in need of redevelopment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Nora, would you call a roll, please?
Berberio.
Yes.
DePiero.
Yes, I'll fight the battle with the council.
Math.
Yes.
Napolitano.
No.
Stanzio.
Yes.
Von Aiken.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. All right, anybody have anything else that needs to come before the board?
Just a word of John.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, so moved.
Anybody opposed? You get to stay. So long.